Let's put them up here. All right, there we go. I'll go with that. Peanut butter ones are great.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, no worries. Thank you. See? I was thinking, where were you guys at that? Okay, so Alan from Shippo State Historic Preservation Office is coming at 7:30 for the training.
That's me. I'm here just up.
Oh.
I'm just making out.
Hi, Alan.
Just hiding in the shadows.
Okay, well, ready for you? 7:30 if you don't mind.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. And then Rajit is coming in 7:50. For the Kelly Grove Complete Streets Quarter.
Is over changing when you want?
Oh. Maybe motion to review Alan at 7:30 and Rajit at 7:50? Before we approve the agenda? Hey, Rich. Oh, there's some cookies and croissants. Hey, welcome. We've got some cookies and croissants there if you want any.
Thank you.
See, it looks good on you.
Sure.
A mammoth chair. Oh, right. Don't bother about that. See your vice is nice too, too? There you go. Welcome. If you want any cookies or croissants, feel free to help yourself. Hey, hey. Good to see you here. Love this dress. What do you know, I got the game. We do report right now.
Yeah, let's say so.
Got one more minute.
Good evening. Let's call the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 2nd. Call to order. Chairman Brol, if you could do the roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Naylor?
Here.
Commissioner Moody is absent. Oh, there she comes. I'll come back to her. Commissioner Stokes?
Here.
Commissioner Brol is here. Commissioner Lubek does not appear to be here. Chairman Dahat does not appear to be here. And I will go back to Commissioner Moody. Are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, great.
I'm here, too.
Oh. Chairwoman Yulinski.
Just in case you wanted to know. Okay, moving along. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with a couple changes. I think we're trying to build flexibility into this agenda. Training, item nine. Like to move that. We're trying to build flexibility so approximately 7:30. So if we can move that into a time slot where after we finish an item, that would be the next item up from 7:30 or later. And then also, item six D is consider recommending approval of the Kelly Corridor completed. Streets planned. Trying to move that to about 7:50 or the next time slot from that point forward.
Support.
Who supported? I'm sorry. Moody, okay.
Okay, first.
Would you like me to call?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay. Commissioner Brol, yes. Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Chair Yulinski?
Yes. Okay, first hearing of the public is for items that are not scheduled for a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the first hearing of the public. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 4th, 2024 meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes.
As presented.
I'll support. Excuse me, I'll support.
Would you like me to call Brol?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Moody?
Naylor.
Naylor called. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Commissioner Brol, yes. Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
And Chair Yulinski?
Yes. Now we move on to the public hearing. Do I have a motion to present the special land use request for 24465 Grashit, an auto body repair facility? Considering feedback on the special land use request.
Madam Chair, a motion to open up the public hearing for this particular agenda item would be in order.
I make a motion to open the public hearing present to present the special land use request for 24465 Grashit, an auto body repair facility. Consider feedback on the special land use request.
A second. Would you like me to call Brol?
Yes, please.
Okay. Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Brol, yes. Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Chair Yulinski?
Yes. Okay, do we have anyone from the public that needs to speak on 24465 Grashit? You could just go up to the podium and sign your name. Please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Malik Sima. I'm the consultant. I have over here the owner of the business with me. This location has been in the business for almost 30 years as a collagen shop. My client leased it from another client I have. He purchased two years ago. And now we still, you know, we want to stay in business. We are operating in this location. Right now, we have five employees and we're also looking to add more employees to the business. And we like to be a stay in this business over here to keep, to serve the community.
Any questions for the applicant?
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, so we can hear from the applicant in the following agenda items. This is the opportunity for the rest of the public to speak during the public hearing if you have anything to say about this agenda item. But thank you very much for approaching the podium.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments on the auto body shop? You could just please sign your name at the podium, please.
Where do I sign?
Is there a hand up there?
No.
Oh, that's all right. No, that's all right, sir.
What I have to say, I'm a property rights guy.
Could you state your name, please?
Ms. James Komske, 16269 Forest. I'm a property rights guy. So I think they could do whatever they want to a point. Now, they had cars out there leaking fluid on the ground. I wasn't cool with that. Then yesterday, they parked a truck in the alley blocking me in. So they interfered with my business. Should I go interfere with your business? And I would love to have them there. Never had a problem with them. But obviously, there's something going on. The city enforcement's been there every day. But like I said, I'm a properties rights guy. I don't, if they don't tell me what to do, I don't tell them what to do. I have a parking lot, the only one in East Point, probably. And I have a couple altercations with a couple of their customers. But, you know, I can settle that. But when they interfere with my business of doing landscaping, I have this, I've been there since 1992. And I see a problem happening, just like with the banquet hall. There was a problem. They shut them down. Thousands of people were there. It was a madhouse. So the city did something. But like I said, I don't want to interfere with their business. They do a good business. That's great. But I shouldn't be suffer for my part, for my land, and I've been there for 92, to take a backseat. And that's all I have to say. So I wish you guys would see what's going on and have them try to fix it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have anything to speak on for the property?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing of the public.
Madam Chair, there could just be a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Support.
Moody? I'll call Brol. Mike Brol, Commissioner Brol that is, yes. Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Chair Yulinski?
Yes. Moving on to new business. Item A under new business. Consider a motion to approve a site plan for 24465 Grashit, an auto body repair facility. Ms. Brashowski, do you have?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having me. Good to see everyone in attendance. Thank you for coming. So we are discussing the property located west along Grashit between Ten Mile and Stevens. I have the review in front of us on the screen if you'd like to follow along. The applicant, Yusuf Yakob, seeks to reoccupy the existing automobile repair facility at 24465 Grashit. The review that we have on the screen is based on the February 2nd, 2024 site plan. And the host, as they've mentioned, or the applicant, as I mentioned, has operated an auto repair facility since 1981. Since there was a change in ownership, our zoning ordinance requires that uses involving a special land use, seek special land use approval if there's not a special land use on file. So we can go to right here where the ordinance says special land uses are required when there's not a record of special land use on file. And let's go back to the property. The property is located within the mixed-use regional district. And the zoning ordinance regulates auto repair facilities as a special land use. So therefore, the applicant seeks special land use approval. And with that, they are required by the state of Michigan to submit a site plan. So if we're seeking special land use approval, applicant must also seek site plan approval. Planning Commission has authority to approve a site plan. And they have authority to recommend approval of a special land use. If approved today by the Planning Commission, the applicant will move forward to City Council, who has the final authority over special land uses within the city of East Point. All right, so since we're discussing the special land use today, we have a recommended motion to recommend approval of the special land use for the automobile repair facility at 24465 Grashit. And we will, in the later item on the agenda, discuss the site plan. But within the site plan, there is considerable improvements on the property. For example, the site plan requires a screening wall, a continuous screening wall of one material, six-foot screening wall right here. We also, in the site plan, require the non-obstruction of this public alley. It is not a private alley. It is a public alley. And the applicant cannot park their vehicles within this alley. And we also require no chain link fences, so we have a recommendation of a metal fence to use. This is similar to what the property across the street, the storage facilities are using, to manage an entrance and exit gate and also a fence to protect their private property. So that, all of these are considerable improvements that will brightsize the perceived or real nuisances created by the property today. And we will discuss that within the site plan review. We have a motion for conditional approval on, for your site, for your special land use. And the applicant is here today to discuss any questions.
I have a question for City Planner. That's okay?
Yes.
Help me understand this. I drove by that building today and the sign says open. But they don't have a special land use. So do they have a business license?
Chair? They're seeking a business license throughout this process. But we do have a provision within our ordinance that allows for uses who seek special land use approval within three months to be granted a temporary use, as long as they're seeking their special land use approval.
Okay. And so, and when did, when did that three months start, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Okay. And my second question would be just regarding like the provision about parking in the public alleyway. Have you communicated that to the applicant yet? Are they aware of what you are presenting to us right now?
Chair?
Yes, please.
So the planning department always submits their reviews one week with you ahead of time, ahead of the meeting. And we invite applicants, we're always here to address any questions. And that's the topic of the meeting today, just to make sure we're on the same page of what's required and what's recommended and address any questions for the applicant. That's the purpose of the meeting.
So I would like to understand more about that public alleyway. If you could scroll back to the picture.
Yeah, if you don't mind, there's more picture. Do any of these help?
Sort of. The first one you showed actually was helpful.
Okay, I'll go up there.
Yeah, that one right there. So on the right side, right, so you've got an alleyway that separates commercial buildings and some form of parking lot on the left. And then on the right is actually an additional parking lot, correct?
Yes, Chair?
Yes, please.
This photo is not current. It doesn't reflect the new screening wall that this childcare facility has installed. So they installed a vinyl six-foot white screening wall, which I was showing further on. But you were correct, Commissioner, on the right is a parking lot that's owned by the applicant.
So what I, I guess what I'm really trying to get is on the right side is when, in, in your recommendation, when you talk about them having to park the vehicles, not in the alley, but on the right, in a parking spot, it's the right side that should be striped and that type of thing. I know on the left side, there's the vinyl fence. I saw that, so I understand that. Okay, so I guess the problem I have that I really try to wrap my arms, my thoughts around it, is I drive by it today and the alley is chock full of cars. So I didn't even know it was an alley. Looking at the picture, I can see it goes through. And it was chock full of cars, so you couldn't get through it. But yet the applicant knew about the request or the requirement not to park cars in the alleyway. So I'm confused, like how could... The day that they were presenting in front of us, or the day that we're here to approve this, they're, they're parking cars in the alleyway, which they knew was not allowed. I don't understand that.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, go ahead.
So we haven't had a conversation about not parking cars in the alley or not obstructing the alley. I was only, I only presented the memo via email. And today, I'm hoping that we can address any of these concerns. The intent of this meeting is to address these concerns and clear the air and be on the same page.
But however, that's why I asked you initially, when did you send this information to the applicant? And I was trying to understand if they had already received this a month ago or even two weeks ago, that shouldn't happen, in my mind. So I'll go back and I'll ask, I'll re-ask you the question. When did you send them the information?
Chair?
Yes, please.
I sent the applicant the same email, the same time as I sent the Planning Commission one week ahead of the meeting.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
City Planner? So just to be clear, there was another picture that showed like an alleyway, but it's not, it doesn't go through all the way. Is that correct? Like the one picture you have with all the cars parked in it?
Chair?
Yes.
Page 12 has a top-down view. If you scroll up just, or that works. No, two pages before the one that you had showed with the alleyway that we were looking at. If you just go up two more pages. What, two more?
Right there.
Nope, one. Or wait, that one, now two more. I promise it's there. I'm looking at it right here. Oh, you know what? It's page one, but it's page 12 on the PDF.
Page one.
There you go.
Chair?
Yes, please.
To address your question, Cloverleaf is right here and this alley dead ends. You can see my mouse.
So is that alley allowed to be parked in?
No, it is public right of way.
Both of them, each side? Because there's one that goes between Forest and Bell, two that I understand also gets blocked?
I believe that both are public right of ways.
Okay.
Did you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but did you say the one that goes towards Cloverleaf does go through? It does dead end, okay.
It dead ends.
But cars are not allowed to be parked in any part of that?
No. The alley is not vacated. And vacation of alley means that the public alley becomes a private property. And that's a process through City Council.
But I believe we, maybe, Chair?
Yes.
We included language saying that they need to stay in their plans, that that alley would, with clear language that that alley would not be used. So I guess the question would be to the property owner, are you willing to abide by those necessary documentations of keeping that alleyway free and have that clearly stated in your site plan and special land use request? So that we will, you will correct the situation that we found you viewing?
I am all, yes.
Just to be clear, what is the definition of park? Is that any vehicle can be turned off and somebody can run in the building for a minute? Or where does it add? Where's it started? Where does it end? It means no car should be turned off or not running in park? Or what is, what is the definition of that?
From the top of my head, Chair?
Yes.
Parking lots can't store inoperable vehicles. And they can't store vehicles related to a business greater than 24-hour period. So let's test my memory. All right. Someone's been reading the zoning ordinance. Anyway. Facility providing vehicle parking spaces along with adequate drive aisles. Okay, drives and aisles for maneuvering, designed and used for parking of any operable vehicle by the public. No storage of non-business-related vehicles is allowed. Business-related vehicle storage is permitted if the vehicles are operable or if the storage of the vehicle is for a period of 24 hours or less. But this is not a parking lot. This is an alley, public right of way. It's a street.
Does anyone else have any questions? No questions?
No questions. No questions.
Marv, if I may, on the agenda, it says, uh, item A is site plan approval, are we doing special land use?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was my mistake. Special land use would
Be first.
I guess could be first. Chair, City Attorney, do you have any?
Special land use should be first, so A and B can just be
My bad.
Do we need to make a motion to, um, change that?
Just for procedural purposes, yeah, just do a motion to switch A, uh, the language that's contained in A would be in B and vice versa, and, uh, planning commission can then vote on which will approve the special land use.
Okay. Do we have someone to make a motion to, um, amend the agenda for items A and B?
I'll motion to amend the agenda to have the language of item B in place of item A.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Brule, yes. Chair Ulynski?
Yes.
Now, do, do we want to consider the motion to approve the special land use for two-two-two four-four-six-five Greshit, an automobile body repair facility?
Madam Chair, did the commission want to hear from any further comments from the applicant or their representative at the podium?
Thank you. Does the applicant have any questions or does anybody have questions for the applicant?
Well, I do, I would, I would like to, I'd like to hear, first of all, I'd like the applicant to explain why cars were in the alleyway today, and further, I'd like to hear the applicant agree that they will not put cars in the alleyway.
Yusuf Yakup, how are you guys? Okay. Um, I, I had a, I think it was a city member that was at the facility yesterday and gave me forty-eight hours to move everything. I never knew about this beforehand, so I will get that problem solved, there will be no cars in the alley. The only thing I had a question about is where do you guys want me to put the dumpster? Cause do you guys want me to take a parking spot away from my, like, I don't have much parking spot, so is it possible I can have a dumpster all the way in the back corner wall, like the enclosure for it? That would be the only thing I would want in the alley. I have no issues about getting all the cars out of the alley.
City Planner?
Um, Chair?
Yes, please.
I think that would be a question to, directed towards our, our fire marshal and building official, and then we might need to seek city council approval for that request of putting the dumpster by the, the dead end.
I have a question, do we have, pardon me, do we have to have a, um, the dumpster, uh, covered? Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Like an enclosure, correct?
Yes.
Yes, no problem.
Yeah, that's no problem, I think I did that in the plans already.
Okay. But, Mr. Ross Sheshevsky, you can't put a dumpster in any public alley, can you? I mean, it's a, that's a public access road.
And if you push the dumpster back?
Like all the way back where it is a dead end, there's a wall?
And how will, how will the truck maneuver to empty it?
They pull up, pull it out, dump in, and reverse.
We're still referring to the fire marshal, Ms. Ross Sheshevsky? Is that question?
Uh, sure, yeah, I'm, I don't oversee
Yes.
Public right of ways and maneuvering, so I would defer to the fire marshal's comments.
Thank you.
That's fine, that's fine.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Just thinking out loud about that suggestion, what is at the end? Are you the end unit? I really don't, I was, I was wondering.
I am, me and Cloverleaf.
So you and Cloverleaf, like, are kind of, you're at the end of that alley?
I'm here, Cloverleaf's here, so like, we're corner wall together.
So no other business owners in that strip would be impeded by having the dumpster if that was to be approved?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saying no further discussion, anyone? Are we ready to make a motion to approve the special land use for two-four-four-six-five Greshit? Comments, concerns?
I would like to make a motion to recommend conditional approval of the proposed special land use for an automobile repair facility at two-four-four-six-five Greshit, zero-two-one-four-three-zero-two-five-two-zero-six-zero-zero-five-nine-zero-three-five, based on the findings of the fact in the planner's review letter dated April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Do we need to add to refer to the fire marshal regarding the dumpster, does that need to be on record? We could add that to the motion? Okay, sorry. Right, motion has been put on the table?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Him.
Okay. Okay. Um, Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brule, yes. Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
And Chair Ulynski?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, consider a motion to approve the site plan for two-four-four-six-five Greshit?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I was gonna say, um, with the site plan, these were the stipulations where we're asking about the dumpster, um, before we can approve that, the parking stated language. Um, we want to make sure that, that is approved based on these conditions. That's stated here. It's all things. Talks about fencing, being the proper fencing, like the chain link, all those things stated to come down, so we approve based on all those, these conditions that are listed on these ten of them.
Marv, do you have anything to add to that?
Chair, I, sorry, Commissioner Naylor, I, I couldn't really, um, hear what the request was.
The site plan approval being contingent on these ten items where we spoke about the dumpster, the fencing, some screening, um, do we file a motion that's the conditional site plan approval?
Correct.
Based on these ten items?
Correct. There's, um, Chair, Commissioner Naylor, if I may, there's three items considered for the planning commissioner to consider in terms of waiving, so that's up for discussion. But Commissioner Naylor, you are correct, um, the conditional approval would be those ten items.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Marv, would, uh, the commission also be adding that on number eleven regarding the approval of the dumpster at the end of the alley?
Yes.
Close subject to the fire marshal's recommendation?
Thank you. Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, if I may, there's three items up for consideration to waive. One is, um, the planning department recommends that we grant a waiver for the, uh, or grant a waiver for the applicant to pay in lieu of landscaping of four trees. We already have, um, the applicant to plant, I think, three trees within the site plan, I can go to that if you'd like. Um, and then we also ask for the planning commission to waive the site tree requirement. We've been doing that because the zoning ordinance isn't right-sized yet, um, we passed the zoning ordinance text, but it's still waiting for city council approval, first and second readings, anyway. So standard two is, uh, standard of what we've been doing, and then three, waive the landscape architect seal requirement, because it's just reoccupancy, there's, um, no new construction and minimal space for landscaping. So there's three waivers for your consideration to add to one to eleven.
I don't have an issue with that, is there anyone else?
I don't have any issue with this, it's just that I know the, um, the client has received this at the same time, I would like to, um, make a moment of progress that he's willing to do these things, and he do want to call on one or just, I wanted to add that.
Uh, if the applicant could come to the podium, please? Are you aware of one through ten?
Correct, I made the changes on the plan that I just resubmitted to you guys, so all those changes that we put on the plan to get approved and make happen.
May I ask a question of the applicant while they're on the podium? So I'm, I'm curious, how many bays do you have that, um, repairs are happening in?
So it's a body shop, it's a one bay in the front, then one bay in the back, and then when you just pull in, you just move, maneuver around, I have one hoist, one frame machine, uh, paint booth, um, I got a couple of jacks in there, so it's just technically two bays, two doors.
How many cars do you push through on an average basis? In a day or in a week?
Some days, like, it's a hit or miss because of parts, you know, a lot of parts are on back order, but we do ten, ten to fourteen a week.
All right, and how many parking spots were there? Let's assume that the, that the dumpster isn't approved in the alley, how many parking spots does it leave you on the outside?
Uh, it's gonna probably leave me, I think I got eight now, six?
You have eight now?
I believe so, if I count it, if I remember correctly, eight or nine?
Eight or nine?
Yeah.
The dumpster takes one spot?
Two spots, I would say.
Okay, so I just know, thank you.
And then, um, for the cars that are parked in that alley, um, there were several, I did not count them, um, cause I too looked at it, where will you be storing those cars?
So we're gonna maneuver stuff around the shop, and then I'm just gonna have to slow down with business, so instead of taking so many clients at one time, I'm just gonna have to push them out like a week or two until I move cars and then bring more cars in. It's the new game plan for me to have to do, that's, I don't wanna do it, but I have to do it, you know?
Understand. All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have anyone to consider making the motion to approve the site plan for two-four-four-six-five Greshit with the one through ten conditional approvals and the one through three follow, uh, waivers?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
One through eleven because we're adding the, uh...
Oh, the dumpster, sorry, thank you, one through eleven.
Motion to approve the site plan for automotive repair facility at two-four-four-six-five provided that a revised site plan is presented, presented to the city planner to address the comments to, during the planning commission meeting and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter dated April fifteen, twenty-twenty-four, and based on the fact that the site plan is generally in compliance with the ordinance listed below, is information needed for the site plan, conditional approval and waivers. So I make a motion that we approve based on conditions one through eleven, eleven being the addition of the dumpster, uh, potentially being placed in the alley upon approval from the fire marshal and city planning, and, uh, we acknowledge the three waivers.
Second, approve.
Okay, Ms. Naylor, Commissioner Naylor, that is.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Commissioner Brule, yes. Chairman, Chairwoman Ulynski?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Number seven was to get, um, a zoning or something for a dumpster enclosure?
Yes.
So isn't that the same thing as number eleven, or am I misunderstanding?
No, they're, they're two separate issues.
Two separate things, okay.
So, yeah, um, the dumpster enclosure is one, and then the, moving the dumpster to the end of the alley is approval by the fire marshal.
Got it, I didn't understand, I'm so sorry, thank you.
No, you're fine, thank you. Okay, um, on to training with Alan.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, while Alan approaches, I have the presentation up on the screen, you have it within your packets. Uh, we're excited to have Alan Higgins here today, a specialist from the State Historic Preservation Office, to teach us a little bit about a certified local government program. And I do wanna say, I'm sorry for complicating things earlier, but we can address the, um, business items first and then go into the Kelly Road Complete Streets Program, so I know we have one more item on the agenda, and, sorry for complicating things. Thank you, Specialist Higgins.
Thanks. Um, and I will talk quickly because I know you guys have other things to do today. Um, so I'm Alan Higgins, so I'm from the State Historic Preservation Office, or the SHPO as we refer to it. Um, I also have Haley Schreiber from our office, um, with us. Um, I did our community outreach programs for the past five years or so, um, I'm now moving into grants, and Haley will be our outreach specialist going forward, so, um, should you guys have continued interactions with our office, um, Haley is someone that you would be working with. Um, so I was asked to talk about the Certified Local Government, or CLG, program today, um, which is a tool that we use to support communities that have an interest in historic preservation, that's really what it's about at the end of the day. Um, I don't have a, I'll wait for her to get back so I can advance the thing.
Need a clicker?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Um, you're, you're good, no worries. Um, so just briefly, before we get into the CLG program, um, if you're not familiar with our office, um, we're part of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, so we work alongside a lot of their programs there. Um, obviously, we deal specifically with historic preservation issues across the state. Um, we have historians, we have architects, we have planners, um, a bunch of different staff, grant specialists, and we help communities, nonprofits, other public entities across the state, basically figure out what to do with their historic properties. Um, a lot of times those are specialized properties, people don't know where to turn, um, so a lot of times they will come to our office to ask for questions, assistance, or guidance on how to deal with those properties. Um, so just, our office is kind of set up into a couple different areas, um, we do archaeology across the state, um, a lot of municipalities will engage with our office through what we call cultural resource management and planning, um, so sometimes municipalities, when they have a project that requires environmental review, um, they will interact with our office to go through what we call section one of six, where we see if those will, those projects will impact historic properties. Um, so road projects, cell towers, things like that, that have, um, some state, always federal, um, funding associated with them, we get involved to make sure that they're not gonna have negative impacts on historic properties. Um, we also help communities identify important places, and then we provide incentives for development. Um, and it's those last two where the Certified Local Government, or CLG, program come into play. So what is the Certified Local Government Program? Um, it's not a very descriptive name, we did not create the name. Um, it's a federal program at the end of the day, um, it ultimately starts with the National Park Service. Um, we manage the program on their behalf, um, so every state across the country has a version of the CLG program. Um, and really, the point of the program is, again, find a way to give communities that have an interest in historic preservation, access to the tools that allow them to do the things they wanna do. Um, so if a community, again, wants guidance, needs assistance, um, through connections at our office and through connections at the National Park Service, providing them with the technical assistance to help facilitate the things that they wanna do as it relates to historic places, um, and then providing grants and other incentives, um, that can help support redevelopment of those places as well, um, or rehab of them, um, as may be appropriate. So it's really kind of a connecting thread, at the end of the day, um, pulling the tools of the federal government, state government, and then the local community together, to figure out how best to maximize everybody's capacity, resources, um, to do right by important historic places in communities across the state. This is kind of the visualization of that, the idea of that partnership, um, from the National Park Service, then through the State Historic Preservation Office, and then the local community. Uh, not gonna go through this in all the detail, cause again, I know you guys are busy, uh, but the idea is that the National Park Service provides the, the framework for that Certified Local Government, or CLG, program. We at the state then provide the day-to-day assistance to our communities, so we're out there on the ground helping them, um, whether that's doing building walkthroughs, whether it's doing drive-through of the neighborhoods, um, provide technical assistance, um, and then providing grant funding to those communities that participate in our program as well, um, which we'll talk about. Um, and then at the local level, it's basically the local unit of government implementing those things that they wanna do as it relates to historic preservation. Um, the great thing about this is, it's not up to us what you do at the end of the day, you know, it, it, they're local decisions, right? You guys are the ones that are determining what's important for your community. So again, it's just about us helping to establish those partnerships that let you do the things that you're already trying to do as it relates to preservation. Um, so again, it starts with the local government, um, you know, if a community does have interest in historic preservation, if they have an interest in seeing how the CLG program may be able to assist them, they they come to us, talk to us about their goals, what those may be. Every community starts in a different place. You'll see here in a minute, I put a map of all of our different communities, but no community does preservation the same way. You know, we have communities from the city of Detroit to the village of Calumet in the U.P. that participate in this program. So communities of all size, resources, capacity, and all of them do it a little bit differently. Some of them have very complex needs as they relate to historic places. Some communities may have a handful of places that they really want to recognize, tell the story of, and protect. So again, it's about being reflexive and being responsive to the needs of the community and where they are in engaging preservation. A lot of communities are at the beginning. Some communities have been doing it for 25, 30 years, and they just need a little additional hand. So it's designed to fit all of those needs. So this is just a map to give you some context for communities that participate in this program. A lot of times, communities like to know what their neighbors are doing or not doing as it relates to such activities. So we currently have 42 communities that participate in this program. There are about 2,200 communities across the country that participate in this, so it's a pretty expansive program. So again, here you can see kind of the breadth of communities that we have. Obviously, a lot in the metro area are participating in this program. You know, and the great thing about this program is, once you're in it, if you want to continue to be in it, you can be in it as long as you want. We have some communities that have been with it since the program started in the 80s, and of course, we have some communities that come on now. So it's one of those things that, you know, should your community have an interest in preservation, even if you don't have an immediate need for the tools or incentives right now, it's something that you can get into and then kind of have it in your back pocket for when needs come up, so that you already are on the books, so to speak, to access some of those technical assistance and grain activities that may be of use to you. This is just a kind of handy chart, if you will, of how we support our CLG communities. I'm not going to go through all of these tonight. Mainly wanted you all to have it in your packet to see kind of the difference in how we deal with our CLG communities. Obviously, as a state agency, we support and provide assistance to any community that comes to us, right? You know, we don't tell them no. We want to provide support. But for our communities that come to us and say, hey, we really want you to help us figure this out, we go the extra step for them in providing some of these tools to them. So that, again, goes from things like on-the-ground support to having annual grant opportunities for historic properties that just aren't otherwise available to a lot of our communities throughout the state. And we'll talk about a couple of these, but we're not going to go through all of them. So again, just one example is that specialized support, really being there on the ground for communities, particularly for those communities that maybe haven't engaged historic preservation in a comprehensive way before. Maybe they just don't know where to start with activities, you know? A lot of times, we all know in our head those places that are important to us in our communities. But we'll come out, figure out ways to help you put those to paper, help integrate those into community planning, economic development activities. Just talk through things, right? You know, be a presence in the community. And I should say too, right, that is dependent on kind of how much you want us to be involved. You know, the goal of this program is not for us to come in and tell you guys what to do. It's for, and I say you, but any community that wants to participate, but it's for the community to come to us and say, hey, how can you help us do X, or how can you help us do Y? So it's not us determining what your goals should be, but it's about the community telling us what you want to do, what your goals are, and then us finding a way to help you as it relates to preservation. So that's the intent of the specialized support like this. Really, again, be there as a presence, be there to talk through things, figure out, through our skill set, you know, our architects, our planners, whoever it may be, can help facilitate things at the local level as it relates to historic preservation activities. Training and education is a big part of that. We do everything from, you know, training for commissions to training for the public, educational awareness, informal, formal. All of that is kind of open to our communities through the CLG program. Again, we, you know, we know that they may not have the capacity, the expertise locally to engage everything that they may need to as it relates to historic preservation. So we're happy to come out and provide those tools. We also will, through our grant programs, do things like hands-on training for communities. So things like how to restore historic windows, how to restore historic porch elements. Again, really trying to build the capacity of the community to deal with those issues on their own for the long term to the benefit of the community overall.
Specialist Higgins, if you don't mind, I know we're going to have some questions at the end, but is training, I'm looking for training on the list, is this a CLG community or non-CLG?
For the training? So the things that we're going to talk to through today are CLG. So I mean, we do, again, we're a state agency. We help every community that comes to us. And we, you know, we'll come out and talk and do requests. But again, for the CLG communities in particular, it's a little bit more extensive in terms of the training and support that we'll provide them. But generally speaking, yes, even if you're not, if you don't participate in this program and you have a need as it relates to historic preservation, and you just don't know where else to go to, or you want to learn more about it, yeah, you can always call our office, you know, and I would encourage you to do so. You know, we're always happy to come out and talk to communities. We're happy to provide support. Training, because, you know, a lot of these things are specialized, and you kind of just need to know how to make those connections to figure things out. So, you know, even if this is a program that you guys are like, yeah, too much for us, we don't want to participate. You know, as you think about these things and how they relate to community planning and development in your community, yeah, you know, consider us an asset. Again, you know, reach out to myself, reach out to Haley. We're always happy to come and talk about these sorts of things. So the big one for the CLG program is that for communities that, again, have an interest in preservation, this is the only way currently to access grant funding through our office. So we do not have grant funding programs that are open to every community currently. They are accessed through participation in the CLG program. So that's why I said earlier, you know, this is a good thing. If a community at all has interest in preservation, to have in your back pocket, should there, you know, you have a need that could be on the table in five, 10 years, even if you don't have an immediate need, because it gets you that access and that pathway to getting the grains from our office. Not going to go through all this, but basically, we have two categories of projects that we fund. So we will fund planning projects, documentation, education. So we will fund things like revitalization plans, surveys of important historic places in the communities, doing things like National Register of Historic Places nominations, or local historic district studies, which can then be used to get those property owners access to state and federal tax incentives for those properties when they are doing work on them. So we can support those sorts of things through our grant programs. Again, we can do training, hands-on training, public education, those sorts of things. And then we will also fund rehab work on certain properties. And you can go ahead and go to the next slide if you want. So we, through this program, will do rehab, so bricks and mortar work, on properties that are owned by the municipality, a nonprofit or another public entity. So a lot of communities will use this to support things that, you know, maybe a property that a historical society owns in their community, and they need grant funding to support some of the work that they're doing. Sometimes the city owns a historic building, and they need a little extra support for it. So we can put dollars directly into those bricks and mortar activities for things like that. We can also fund the pre-development work, so the engineering studies, structural analysis, all that fun stuff that leads up to the actual building project as well. The thing I like about the grants that come through the CLG program is while the municipality that participates in the program is the primary entity that has eligibility for that, they can also pass through that opportunity to access the grants to other, to other public entities or nonprofits in the community. And so sometimes that can be a boon for organizations that don't directly have access to funding for historic preservation activities. A community can get into this program, and then they can pass off that opportunity to apply for grants, again, to those organizations. So it has a broad community benefit at the end of the day. So that's a good benefit that we see used pretty often. Again, not going to go through all this in detail, just, we, our grants usually cap out at $100,000. So, you know, it can be sizable funding, depending on the scale of the project. And we also fund different projects over time in the same community. There's no cap to the amount of grants that a community can access over time. We've had many communities that have received grant after grant after grant for different phases of projects over time. There are lots of things we can fund with our grants. I just, again, primarily for the benefit of having it in your packet, these are some examples of the types of things that we can fund. Really, we like to figure out how to help communities. Again, it's about what you all might want to do with it at the end of the day. So if you all were to have interest in the CLG program, get into it and say, hey, we have this project we'd like to find funding for. You know, it really becomes a discussion between us about how we can find ways to support those activities at the end of the day. And then this is just an example of how some other communities across the state have used this. So again, there's no cap to the amount of grants that can be received over time. These are just some of our communities that have used them pretty extensively over the last several years to do different types, whether they're planning or revitalization studies, to, again, those actual bricks and mortar work project activities. So you can see some of the examples here, whether that's training, doing window workshops. The city of Detroit, for example, will commonly pass through the grant opportunities to nonprofits within the city. So we've done a lot of work at the Fort Paquette plant, for example, over the years. They've, I think, had seven or eight rounds of funding from us. So again, it's a nice thing to have, should you have those needs as it relates to preservation. The other great thing is that not only do we have grants, but if you're in this program, you also have access to grants from the National Park Service directly. I'm not going to talk about these in a lot of detail, but just throw up examples. So the Park Service does have specialty grants that they give out on an annual basis. They are usually thematically based. So they have grants, for example, to recognize important civil rights sites across the country. We recently did a study in Muskegon, which is a CLG community, to do a survey of sites associated with the Civil Rights Movement in Muskegon County. So Muskegon, Muskegon Heights, and Norton Shores. They also have grants that are dedicated toward rural communities, some that are urban. A nice mixture, really, again, to kind of maximize the amount of resources that are out there for preservation activities. So besides our yearly funding, this is another benefit, that it gives you that access directly to what the Park Service has. Again, kind of weaving those threads of the partnership between the federal, state, and local tools. And I know I'm talking very quickly, but, so the CLG program, how do communities get into it? So any community of any size can join the program. There's no cost to join the program. It's a free program. There's no cost to stay in the program, once you're in it. Any city, township, county, village, in the state of Michigan can join. There are two basic things a community has to do if they have an interest in this program. The first is they have to have a historic district ordinance at the local level. That can sometimes seem scary. It does not, and what that ordinance does is basically it gives the community the tool to identify and protect historic places, should they decide to exercise that right. It does not mean that they're suddenly going to go out and identify a whole bunch of places, but it, again, puts something on the books that if they have a place that they really want to see protected, you know, maybe you would never want to see a certain building demolished in the community. It gives you a pathway to have those conversations. Again, doesn't force you to use it, just gives you that option. So you have to have that ordinance on the books. And then the community also has to have a historic district commission that would help that community engage preservation locally, whether that's doing public outreach. If there are properties that would fall under the ordinance, they would help administer that, but really have a body that supports preservation. It can be comprised of members that serve other commissions and boards throughout the community, but that dedicated entity that really is the voice for preservation at the local level. Every community does those a little bit differently. There's a lot of nuance within that, again, just given the size differences and capacities across the state. But those are kind of the basic parameters. So once a community has those, they can join the CLG program. Those other three requirements kind of come along after. The third one is basically that the idea that communities over time will identify important places in the community. That's what that's about. Again, doesn't mean that you're suddenly going to go out and document every historic place that may be in the community, but over time, again, start to put to paper those places that matter to you as a community. Public participation, that the community does what they're supposed to as it relates to things like Open Meetings Act, FOIA, all those good things a community should be doing anyway. And the fifth requirement there is just that they maintain those requirements for the historic district ordinance and the historic district commission to continue participating in the program over time. That's really what it comes down to. So again, the main pieces are that ordinance, the commission. Anybody can apply at any time, you know? So I would tell you all, if this is something that is ever remotely of interest to you, and you, you know, want to talk more about the realities of how this can work, and the pieces and things like that, again, we come out, we're happy to have those conversations. There's no application window for this sort of thing. Communities come anytime. We work with Park Service, because again, it all tracks back up to them to officially get communities into the program. But we do the day-to-day facilitating of working with the communities on that. It's a lot. I feel like I just threw at you all in a very quick time. So I'm certainly happy to, you know, to talk through any questions you guys may have, but there is the contact information for myself, for Haley as well. So again, you know, regardless of the CLG program specifically, you know, if you guys ever have questions as it relates to, you know, historic property in your community, reach out to us. You know, we want to provide support to you guys. We want to, you know, figure out what to do with that and, you know, help you along your path. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Does anyone have questions?
I had a question. I just happened to be coming to a meeting prior to this meeting with MDOT, and the I-375 redevelopment transformed it back to a street-level boulevard. And there was a lot of conversation about preserving the historic context of Black Bottom. Would that already be a historic district? Or is that's an example of how you can make that, with the ordinance, become a historic area? So then there would be resources that your agency would provide, possibly?
Sure.
Enact some things there?
Yeah, so potentially, and I don't want to misspeak off the top of my head to what status that area may have currently, but, yeah, so the idea of the historic district is, and there are, not to get too far in the weeds, but, so in the state of Michigan, there are two different types of historic districts. So there are districts that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places. You can also have individual properties that are listed in the National Register. You all have a couple in East Point. That is largely an honorific designation. So it's about recognizing the importance of that place to the community at any point in time. The, that is not a regulatory designation. So something could be listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and the property owner could decide they want to demolish it the next day. There would be no repercussions of that, besides the fact that it would come off the National Register. The benefit of the National Register is that for public properties or those owned by nonprofits, it enables them to access certain types of grant funding. For privately-owned properties that are listed in the National Register, if they are income-producing, they can access federal tax incentives for work on those properties. So that's the National Register. There are also local historic districts, which are what would be in place through a local historic district ordinance at the municipal level. So should a municipality have a local historic district ordinance, and they decide they want to designate a property as a local historic district through that process, that would give the city the ability, through the Historic District Commission, to administer changes to that property. So if, again, if there is a historic property or historic area, the area that you're like, we would never want to see anything happen to this. That would be a mechanism through which protective actions could be put on that. It's not to say that changes can't happen, right? Properties need to change. They need to evolve over time. But the idea is to find a way to do that in a way that recognizes the importance of those places and does not do anything detrimental to them to take away from their historic character. So that is a tool that could be used to provide some protective quality to it. The other benefit to the local historic district designation is that that provides all private property owners, so both residential and commercial property owners, with access to the state historic preservation tax incentive. So if a property owner has a property in a local historic district, they then have access to a 25% credit on work that they are doing to that historic building. So for every 100 bucks they put into it, they're going to get 25% of that back on their personal or business taxes, depending on the use, of course. So there, you know, there are benefits to that. One, you know, from the side of promoting and facilitating responsible use over time and redevelopment and rehab of those places, to, you know, historic places are expensive to maintain. We all know that, and so this is a way to offset some of those costs. But then at the end of the day, for those places that are like, yeah, hey, this place is so essential to the character of our community, we don't ever want to lose it, it provides a mechanism through which the city could protect them. At the end of the day, you know, it's up to the, and I say city, but, you know, the municipality. It's up to the municipality to make a decision about what those places are. We don't make those decisions. It's not up to us. They're local decisions at the end of the day. But again, gives them the tools to do what they may think is appropriate for them.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, me?
I have two, actually. Grant Manager Higgins, thank you. Thank you for your time. So I'm hearing that we are required, if we want to participate in this program, to have a historic district ordinance. Do you have any ideas of funding support that communities use to create this ordinance?
So, not directly. So we don't have funding to support creating the ordinance directly. What we do have, though, is we have a model historic district ordinance that communities can essentially use as plug-and-play. So there is state law in the state of Michigan. So there is state law in the state of Michigan that provides the backbone for local historic district ordinances. Again, didn't want to get too in the weeds, but Public Act 169 of 1970 is the public act that allows communities to protect historic places through the establishment of local historic districts. So we do have a model ordinance in our communities that is fully compliant with state law, that we have vetted, it's been vetted by state attorneys, saying that it meets all the requirements of state law, so a lot of communities will just plug and play that, right? If they don't know where to start, it's a good place to, you know, go and plug your community's name in. Of course, you know, municipalities may want to adapt some of that within some flexibility. But that's kind of how we approach that, is we try to facilitate that process through, you know, providing templating as much as we can to make the process as easy as possible.
Okay, thank you, and do you facilitate the, Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, do you facilitate the establishment of national registry? So do you facilitate places to be on the National Register of Historic Places? Is that part of this program?
Yep, so we can use the grant funding to do that. So, you know, to get places listed, individual sites, historic districts on the National Register. You know, that's something that communities commonly use, whether it's an urban area or rural area, they will use our programming to get those places. Again, you know, that stuff sometimes requires a consultant, I mean, anybody can get a place listed on the National Register at the end of the day. A lot of communities will use consultants to do that, because sometimes it's quicker to use a consultant. Costs associated with that, so we do provide, again, the grant funding to offset that, so that they can get those things in place that then allow the property owners to take advantage of the benefits thereof, whether it's other grant funding or tax incentives, or whatever the case may be.
How competitive is the grant for, I remember you said rehabilitation projects are offered grants, so how competitive is that?
Yeah, so it's deceptively uncompetitive. So the, so the thing with our, again, grants, right, they're only open to those communities that participate in the CLG program. So not every community in the state of Michigan has access to this. So right now, there are only 42 communities in the state of Michigan that have access to our grant funding. So it's already a small pool. But even within that, we see applications from maybe seven to 12 communities a year. And so it's an even smaller threshold, right, that is, it's not all 40 communities that are applying for that on an annual basis. We've had some communities where, or some years where we've had four or five grant applications. It just depends on, you know, what is going on in the individual communities, because not every community has a historic preservation project, of course, that they want to do every year. So I would say it's a finite, you know, very finite pool of communities that are applying for those grant funds every year. You know, what I like about how we operate our grants is that we want good projects, right? At the end of the day, we want successful projects. You know, so we approach our grants as a partnership, again, if a community has an interest in finding a grant to support what they want to do as it relates to preservation. You know, we can't write the grant for you for our own program, but we try to do everything we can short of that, right? You know, figuring out scopes of work, we would do reviews, private assistance, you know, making connections to consultants that may be able to help. So again, really kind of honing in on that partner, partnership aspect of this program to, again, provide that assistance and tools.
Thank you, and last question?
Yeah.
Chair?
Yes.
Okay. I see that you facilitate surveys, so I see Cass Corridor Survey, the Vine Street Survey, et cetera. What does that entail?
So when we talk about survey at the state, that means going out and documenting every individual property within an area. So it could be, yeah, so it could be a residential neighborhood, could be a corridor, could be a mixed-use corridor. But it's the idea of going out to those areas, you know, that are defined either by their geographic context, right? So they're related by the development patterns, or maybe they are related thematically. So maybe doing a survey of farmsteads in a township, maybe doing a survey of churches in a community, maybe doing a survey of 1940s commercial architecture in a community, whatever it may be. So when we do survey, that is going out documenting those places, doing photographic documentation from the exterior to document what is important about them as it relates to their character, how they play a role in the aesthetic of our community, and all those things that we value as a place we want to live and work. So we document them, we write up the history of those areas, and again, what makes them important, whether that is development patterns, maybe there's a social context that's important to them, and putting that all to paper with the idea that that will facilitate things like listing of them in the National Register, doing local historic districts, should that be of interest to the community. Because it turns the abstract, right, again, you know, as I said earlier, we all kind of have those places in our head that we know are important to our community. But when those things are integrated into community planning documents, they're a little bit more real, right? They have weight to them at the end of the day. And so that's, again, the idea of that, is going out, identifying those places, figuring out what's important about them, and then as a community is considering what it wants to do for master planning purposes or redevelopment, they can be better integrated into those processes.
Is that something your team produces?
So we will help facilitate, so we will go and, you know, do on-the-ground support, and we've done that in a lot of communities. I did, the most recent one I did was in Escanaba, and the UP helped with a survey of 250 properties up there. So we will go out and help communities, again, a lot of times communities will do, you know, want to use a consultant, and so we can provide grant funding for that as well. But yeah, we provide support for that, you know, sometimes going alongside volunteers from the community that want to do that, teaching them how to do these things. Again, because at the end of the day, you know, we don't want to just create product, right, deliverables, whatever, we want to build that self-sufficiency over the day and teach the communities how to do these things, so they have a better idea of how to do them on their own and kind of fit them into what they're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, anyone else? All right.
All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, a lot of good information. Let's start with the little schoolhouse. We're ready for Rishit's? Or you want to?
Sure, or if you want, do you want to do the site plan first, or?
Okay, what do you think, Mara? Finish the site plan?
Yes.
Thank you guys, very much.
Chair, we're ready to address item C?
Yes. All right, item C, consider the motion to approve site plan for 20770 Kelly Road, a retail store.
Thank you, so we have our applicant here today, we're all familiar with each other because we saw the applicant last month. We have an updated site plan, just so for everyone's sake, this project is located at the intersection of Eight Mile and Kelly Road, and it acts as a gateway into Macomb County. So I guess for the public who may not be familiar with this, the applicant seeks to reoccupy the existing building, and I'm following along, if you want to follow along on the screen. The review is based on the April 13th, 2024 site plan, so this is, this is an update from last month's April meeting. In April, the Planning Commission authorized the applicant to resubmit a site plan and revoke the 2020 site plan. So this review is based off of the resubmission. And we have a motion here to table the site plan for a retail sale establishment at 20770 Kelly Road until the applicant provides a complete site plan submission with key facts such as building height and landscaping. Currently, the site plan does not meet ordinance requirements and information is unclear. We can see the summary of compliance table on the following page, as well as the comments written in the letter dated April 24th, 2024. The applicant's here today to address any questions, and I am also available.
Can, does anyone have questions for the applicant?
I have a question to the consultant. So if I understood, it hasn't been a month, maybe someone else has, or? We were asking him to resubmit the site plan, and there was going to be administrative services? Or there's going to be the full-fledged site plan as if, and no administrative? I thought we called something saying we'll be doing administrative site plan? The last meeting?
Chair?
Yes, please.
At the last meeting, we revoked the 2020 site plan, and we authorized the applicant to return to Planning Commission with a new site plan, illustrating what his, or what the applicant's proposed design of the building will be.
And you have not received that?
Did you have a chance to meet with our city planners and with your application submission?
I had the architect redo a new, I sent, I actually used the, because my architect said it would be faster and easier to use the previous architect who did the work on the building that's currently there to get it in the timeframe, so I could resubmit it within the timeframe that you guys allowed me to turn it back in to get into this meeting. We had a conversation, I told him that, you know, we had to adjust some things on the site plan that the city wanted done to reflect what I was trying to do on that thing. They, we, he drew up another plan, we submitted it. I don't know if we have it up here that we can see it, but we added the trees to the Kelly Road side of the one side of the building, and then we just showed the building redone as far as what we started on the front of the building, all the way around it.
Do you have a site plan? I have the summary of it, but I don't know if I see the site plan permission.
Chair? The site plan is within the packet, and this site plan is the one that we received since our last meeting, I'm not sure if the applicant submitted today?
No, no, I believe we emailed it to you, before I came here, we emailed it and we sent it to you via email with the new site plan.
Yeah, I only see 229.
On there.
Right, so Chair, this review is based on the resubmission since last meeting?
Yeah, you guys gave me an opportunity to resubmit a new one, so I had a new one drawn by the architect, and then I submitted the new one email, I believe to your email and to the Planning Commission email with the new drawing on it.
Chair, so this review is based off of that updated site plan, and the recommendation is to table, because not insignificant information or significant information is not shown on the site plan submission. And I can go into the detail of the summary of compliance, but one main thing is building height. The building height says it's 112 feet, that's clearly not a 112-foot building.
No, it's 22 feet tall, the building, the actual building, 22 feet tall.
That's great to know, but we need that on the site plan, Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I'm still, I'm looking at documents that say 229, we met last month in April, or March?
Correct.
So is there a new set of planes, unless it's not in March, I've seen pictures, but I see your comments, but I'm not seeing what was submitted. Maybe it's me.
We're talking about, yeah. These are dated 413.
Page 414?
Oh, I don't know what page, sorry, they're dated 413.
64.
Going the wrong direction, okay. I saw her mind, but I just see the way before I thought.
So my understanding, Ms. Bronishevsky, is that the site plan review is based off of the most recent site plan proposed?
Yes.
And it's still not up to par?
Yes.
And did you have a chance to review the?
I reviewed it, I sent it back to him, it needs like, I think they want some kind of like another different type of engineer to come do some kind of other work on the property as well. I, when I purchased this property, I had no idea the depth of what was going to go into it. And it may, you know, it's my mistake, the issue for me now becomes is I've been paying for this property since January 1st, and it's, you know, it's been a process for me to kind of just maintain that, I'm probably paying about $4,000 a month just to have this building sit here, and I understand there's a lot of ordinances and a lot of things at the city, and I'm trying to get this done to what you guys want, so we can get this business open and operating in the city. You know, we started the front, and the building, you know, the front of the building looks great. All I want to do is figure out the best way to get in there, because some of the plans, when I sent the letter back, the guy said we can't get it back in the timeframe that they're giving you, because we're going to have to hire somebody else to come out, those plans are going to run anywhere between $10,000 to $15,000. So it's becoming a little difficult for me to maintain the, which is none of your guys', you know, it's not the city's issue or anything, it's mine. I just didn't realize that it was going to take, you know, it's already, I estimate it to be open by, pretty much by March or April 1st, and operating. So now, you know, I know there's some issues with it, and I'm going to, I guess we're going to have to figure out how to get it done just so we can kind of get this thing going. I don't know how long I can go by just paying $4,000 a month to keep the building just sitting there. I don't know if you guys have any ideas or any way we can figure out a way to kind of get this moving, or, you know?
So my question to you would be, I know we extended the deadline, I think we're already at the deadline for you to get a submission to be back on the meeting for today.
Right, I had to have it by the 15th of last month, which gave him like two weeks, maybe 12, 14 days to get it done, and...
But did you have any meeting with the administration to come into the office and meet with someone?
No, no, I, once, because he was rushing, he only gave it to me like literally the day of. So I had to submit it, so I did it via email, and I sent it into her, Mara and the city planning, I emailed it to both places. So we had it, so when she replied back with the comments, I sent it back to him, and he just was like, oh man, he's like, you're going to have to do, you know, what they're asking for is this, 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 this is going to run you upwards towards, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 to get these plans, and I was like, whoa, I didn't, I didn't anticipate that kind of funding to come, you know, out of this.
Chair?
Yes, please.
It's up to the commission, if you want to pursue administrative site plan approval and not table a site plan for your review next month, if you'd like that, then there's a couple items that the commission needs to address that administration cannot waive. And I can just go through that if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So the applicant seeks to use EIFS, well, first of all, if the height is...
It's 22.
If it's not, okay, so that works. Moving forward, the EIFS is used as a facade material, so I know the applicant was going to speak about that today, and the Planning Commission was going to decide if you want to, if you would like to see that as a primary material. Right now, it's regulated as just an accent material, I think of 10% or less of the facade, and now that is a primary facade material. So the Planning Commission would have to decide if you'd like to see the EIFS and allow that to move forward. And then there's also two landscaping items. One is to remove the requirement of having a professional landscape architect to provide the landscape plan, just due to the nature of the project, and then also waive the excessive site tree requirement.
On the property, I believe that where the city asked me to put the trees is actually city property, and I have no issue with putting whatever tree that you guys would like to have on the Kelly Road side as well. I don't necess, there's not a lot of property to put landscaping, so to have a planning architect do it would just kind of be a lot of extra work since there's really no landscaping area to do that, and then the timeframe to actually find a guy, hire a guy, and have him draw it might be time-consuming as well. And then we have a picture of the front of the building, of what it looks like, of the material I want to use. It's already up there, it has like a limestone look to it, and you can, you'll be able to see how the building, the previous to the, after, I don't know if you've driven by it, but, you know, people, it came out really, really, really nice. So basically, how the rest of the building will look is, if you look at the window side of it, what will happen is the tan color will go all the way around the other side, and the same with the gray color will go all around, and it'll look like a limestone look all the way around the building with a gray border along the bottom. There is also a mesh material that goes along the bottom of it, so in case anybody tries to kick it, hit it, it protects it, so it just won't be easily damaged. And if anything does happen, you know, you can already see I put a lot of... And if anything does happen, you know, you can already see I put a lot of, uh, work and pride into the building. If anything does happen to it, I give you guys my word, it'll be repaired and, and always stay looking nice in the city.
So I, I have two questions. Um, first and foremost, are we talking about the, um, the height restrictions or something you mentioned, I thought, uh, it's hard to say that there was some needed height increase. I, I'm looking at the fact that, um, this is kind of like a quasi situation, which I'm trying to address it. If he was, it's, it's new construction that was abandoned. But he, he, this buyer purchased an existing building. So if I was to buy an existing building, would I be required then to modify that building to the current heights? That's something, it's like a quasi situation.
Well, the, the height is taller than the height that it says there. The height is actually twenty-two feet, which does meet city regulation. I don't know why the, the sixteen foot is required, but it is, it is twenty-two feet.
So we meet the height requirement?
Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, if the applicant's building is twenty-two feet, it needs to be shown on the site plan, which we're clear, and it would meet the height requirement. And to your question, great question, Commissioner Naylor, um, some buildings need a site plan on file. So most buildings have a site plan on file, this one doesn't. And it expired, it was revoked, um, so we need to have an accurate, uh, a site plan on file. If the building was actually lower than, uh, what do we require?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen feet or minimum ground floor is actually twelve feet. So if it was lower than twelve feet, the minimum facade height is sixteen feet, so that's just, um, like a false impression of a higher building. So if it was less than twelve feet and it's already built, that would be a case for the Zoning Board of Appeals to, um, see what they can do, uh, in allowing, uh, a non-conforming building or non-conforming structure to be in existence.
So if I understand then, um, whether the, the site height that he is saying is there, it's just not shown in the plans? And if that was shown in the plans, then it would be in compliance?
Yes.
And right now he shows no height and so we need to see that height?
I, I can have him, I'm sure he can add that real easily. I can have him add that into the current site plan, so the, it will be visible.
If you look at the screen, Commissioner Naylor, the height shown is a hundred twenty-five feet. And I know that's not right. We are trying to build a gateway though, so. We allow for six stories, right?
So corrections need to be made to the true height of the building.
Correct.
And if it exceeds our minimum, then he would be in compliance for his site plan. And I guess my only question would be, do we need to come back here next month for that? You gave three things, could that be done administratively if he was to show correction to the site plan? Or you cannot do it administratively?
Uh, Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the topic of the hour. So if you, I feel comfortable both ways.
What'd you just say?
She's comfortable.
I'm comfortable, either way.
You're comfortable either way.
So if the commission just motioned to allow it to be done administratively, you're okay?
Yes.
But the other question is the EIFS, correct? That's like the biggest thing.
Yes.
So the facade currently with EIFS is what percentage of the building currently?
Currently, it's the, the whole, the whole entire front less the windows, which is the picture that you'll see, but it's a new type of process where the, the EFIS looks like a limestone. So it actually looks like stone. It doesn't look like that rough ephes kind of look that you're used to seeing. It's, it's kind of smooth and I don't know if you have the opportunity, you can drive by the building and, and take a look at it, but it's, it's really nice looking. And then we'll, those are the trees that were recommended, we would add on the side and, um, you know, we'll make it on the one side there and we'll place the trees as, as seen right there. And then we do have a picture, I'm sure you guys seen it already, it's the picture of the actual frontage of we, of how the front of the building currently looks now. Just the way it is, the front, there you go. It's got a nice color combo, the, the trim on the top and the bottom all kind of matches really well. I think it's going to be a really good looking building in the city of Eastmont.
So what percentage are we looking to have?
So pretty, pretty much the, the entire building is what we were thinking of doing it because of the, just the way it looks and, um,
We'd have to make some modifications though, because if we're saying that part is, um, excessive of the percentage that we, of the ten percent of the building, it can maybe be the top, I don't know if the
Well, well.
If the new modernized, uh, facade material is different and is not looking the same. I mean, I personally don't know what the old Michael knew, so I can't compare. But if we're still saying it needs to be a less percentage, what modifications would you show that you could do?
Well, I, we'd have to add, I guess, a different material since the front, I guess my request would be then the front, if we can just leave the front as is and then figure out how to do the sides. I just personally think that once we start changing the materials of it, the aesthetics of the building, I kind of want it all to flow nice and neat. So where if we use it and we follow the current path and we just do it through the entire thing, the building will look exactly like that on all four sides. If we start using like a metal or something, I think it takes away from the actual look and aesthetics of the, of the property.
Miss Bronishevsky, I have a question. On the EIFS, um, our max is ten percent. What is the downside to having it higher than ten percent?
Great question, Chair. Thank you. So if you guys remember our conversation when we were writing the zoning ordinance, the workshop exercise was um, facade materials, the good, the bad, the ugly. And the whole purpose of that exercise was to show, if you remember, um, a way that, uh, an architect or builder used EIFS or vinyl or, um, stucco in a positive way and then a negative way. So really all depends, no material is inherently bad. It depends on the vision of the builder. And so that's why we leave some, oops, sorry, some leeway for the Planning Commission to offer waivers because we can't just outright regulate materials as I just mentioned, explained. Um, and we want, we want to build in some flexibility when EIFS is presented in a visually compelling manner.
And there's no downside as to like the wear, um, like it's not a material that is, is going to be needing replaced in a few years or it's pretty durable?
I would defer to Commissioner Naylor on the durability of it.
I mean, it's durable, it's not always going to become an eyesore or not. Um, I mean, I would be willing to offer waiver because I think the design, because of the proximity closeness to the Foot Locker, you were kind of designing for the two buildings that's on that and, and that's sure that part.
I mean, I was just trying to design a building that when somebody saw it or drove by, they're like, whoa, what is that?
But it does kind of flow into the, the Foot Locker.
Yeah, we're in the same, the same vicinity for sure, correct, yes.
It wasn't like it's a, a total, you know, opposite of like, it's like an eyesore, like, oh my god.
No, I, I mean.
But it lends into what's in that corner is what I'm saying, that corridor. Um, so if, if it's a ten percent and I don't know what the percentage is, maybe we got ninety, ten instead of ten ninety.
Yes, I think it's going to be probably reverse.
Okay with the waiver. I mean, I'm looking at, uh, see if we know.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to get some questions. Does anybody else have questions on the materials?
I do on the materials.
None of the materials.
Can you, can you, can you show that picture again? I'm sorry, can you just readdress how that will look?
Yeah, so if you see on the top of the glazed windows, you see there's like a rectangular pattern up to the, up to the, and then you'll see it turns into the gray on the bottom. So the gray color will go all the way.
Basically, yeah, so basically all the way you tend to see it, it goes that way all the way around gray and it'll have this, the, the same look of the stone going all the way across the side. So it'll be a two-tone, just like it is on the front, all the way.
Without the windows, in other words.
Yes, the same without the windows all the way around the building, which will give it the clean kind of nice, really aesthetic, um, that I was personally going for.
Okay.
Commissioner Stokes?
Uh, it doesn't have anything to do with the EIFS, I think that's what it's called. I think, uh, can somebody remind me last meeting, we talked about, uh, the blank wall and the glazing? I don't see any of that addressed in the new site plan either.
I think we did conclude that because it's an eight mile facing, that it met the requirement for the eight mile facing versus Kelly. It doesn't face Kelly, the entrance to that building was facing Kelly and you kind of way to see that the glazing was adequate on it. Faces the building.
I believe that's what you, you, we said last time that we were here.
We can look at our minutes, I'm sure that's what we concluded because it was eight mile facing.
Chair.
Yes.
Yes, so at the last meeting, thank you, Commissioner Stokes, we decided that the, um, primary entrance, uh, as, as you can see on the screen, and the minimum window glass percentage applies to the alley frontage. So the alley frontage is the primary entrance, so that's where the glass provision provides. Um, it appears that there's forty percent of windows, however, this is something that needs to be addressed. Aluminum glazing is not allowed, the windows need to be transparent.
What, what does that mean?
See-through.
They are, they are see-through.
Okay, so Chair, when we see aluminum and glazing, glazing provides the impression that the windows are not see-through, so you just need to have that clarification.
Yeah, you can, I think you can roll up and you'd probably be able to see like right through the building on the picture that might already be there too.
Chair, we need everything represented on the site plan.
Yep, so, so the footage and then the glazing or the windows, transparent window.
Uh, and Chair, Commissioner Stokes, you also mentioned the blank walls and I'll go into the primary entrance. Um, primary entrance can, regulation is not met. We need to have some sort of architectural element like an awning or lintel. Lintel outlines the, it's a design that outlines the entrance of a building, so some sort of prominent feature to denote that this is the front of the building. And these requirements are not waivable by Planning Commission.
So we basically need like an awning at the entrance, you're saying, like a, just kind of like the little awning that comes down where people know that that's the front of the building, basically?
Exactly, and we can address these if this is administrative. Um, I'll also show an example of a lintel.
Awning.
You see this kind of thing?
Chair, I, I remember, um, I think with the glazing, in respect to the glazing, we determined, um, we were talking about green walls or green spaces, you guys remember that? And I think we were discussing waiving the requirements for the glazing as long as we had on the site plan, something for the green wall.
I think we added the trees to the side.
Are we doing?
Talking about the green.
Yeah, the trees instead of the green wall?
Yeah.
Because we didn't want the trees to grow and lack.
Well, the green wall could probably just, everything in the window will die and it'll just look terrible.
Yeah, so they said the trees.
Yeah, so we said the trees instead.
Thanks.
Now, I'm just confused, what an alley is?
I think the alley is in the rear of the building.
The back of the building was a street, is that a street?
It's, yeah.
Is this a street?
I believe it is a street because it, that street will take you all the way to Eight Mile and it takes you to it, it takes you to a neighborhood as well.
So where's the alley? To the right?
I don't know if there is an alley behind that building. Because that, that street leads to Eight Mile into a neighborhood.
The street that there's in at Kelly. I thought it was the Sheriff parking lot. Well, it might be like the Burger King, there's technically an alley to the Burger King and the T-Mobile. So the alley she's saying is really like just the parking lot, isn't it?
Yes.
It's the Sheriff parking lot.
The Sheriff parking lot, right?
Yeah, it's not really an alley here. But you want to say that he needs to Yeah, Webber's the street.
Chair.
Yes, please.
This site plan denotes elevations and it says alley side elevation. So that's where we got that, but we can correct it to any language, any commission.
That, that can be, can it be handled administratively?
Yeah.
Okay, so who could take that up? I don't know why, it's the front door, I don't know where it fell at. Looks like the front door.
Yeah, that is correct, the front of the building.
You did, I understand you did have pace, we counted you seven days, so it fits.
Does anyone have questions regarding the landscaping or, um, waiving the excessive tree requirements?
So the other, the other thing about the property for the rest of the landscaping, the other part of the property where landscaping could go is actually not my property, it actually belongs to the Foot Locker. And as long, and as well as the side of the road belongs to the city, which where we can put the trees, I don't know if I would need some kind of special, uh, something from the Foot Locker, whoever owns that property to put or do something on, on the rest of it.
Chair.
Yes, please.
So the ordinance requires trees in the public right of way, it's nothing new to this project, it's standard procedure for all projects. So you are, uh, required to place trees along the frontage in the right of way. You do not need another permission. In terms of street locker, private property, I'm not sure where you're referring, but, uh, within the review letter, we address the areas where trees are required. Even if it's private property, which I'm not sure it is, I don't believe it is, then obviously don't require it.
Right, okay, I, I just don't want to put something on somebody else's property.
Are you willing to comply with the tree requirements that's shown in the, the compliance?
Yes, I, I will.
Trees in the right of way, they, like you said, you don't have to get a special position. It is city.
Right, that's fine. Uh, wherever the trees are required and whatever tree you would like me to place there, I will be more than happy to put it up there.
The city also has a tree program.
Mm-hmm.
Opperions trees.
So I would just call, I mean, I guess, yeah, call the city or find out more about that, maybe they can kind of help me put something there as well too.
Chair, before we move on, um, if other commissioners have something to say, I do need to address something.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, Commissioner Stokes, you mentioned the transparency and we got in a conversation about street trees. Uh, okay, so those street trees are not a substitution or an addition to any requirement that's previously required. The street trees are a regulation required by this landscaping section of the ordinance. The applicant must still obey or provide a site plan that meets the blank wall length provision. And right now, we need to have, um, an updated site plan with, that consists of, um, meeting the blank wall provision. Right now, there's no architectural variation, the street trees do not count as architectural variation, the street trees are their own requirement. So we need to see something there, that's something that we can handle administratively, but also it can be up to your conversation as well, what you'd like to see.
Well, I thought he stated that the three sides were going to be wrapped identically. It still would be a blank wall, but he has the two tones, if I understood.
There's going to be, yeah, there's basically going to be a two-tone color with the, with this stone look all the way around, correct?
Greenery.
Yes. I, I think placing something on, on the wall, of course it's up to you guys, but placing on the wall, I think takes away from the whole entire structure of the building. I think if you look at it, it's going to be classy and simple versus starting to put things all over it. I think it, it kind of deters the look I was going for and I think even people that look at it would look at it differently versus having the whole structure like one look, one way versus starting to add this over here, this over here.
Well, we did discuss the green wall and we ruled that out because we said when they die off, it's such an eyesore.
For six months, it'll be brown.
Marked that on our entryway. And I thought we said the trees on Kelly in that
Would be okay, that's what I thought, yes.
Well, um, then someone said a mural, welcome to East Point.
I think we declined the, the mural.
They said they got to maintain the mural, so then it's somebody's building saying, there were several conversations. I thought we agreed following that the trees would suffice.
Chair, if you would like, on the screen, we have the regulations for the Neighborhood Mixtures District. And we require, um, no more than a sixteen foot long blank wall. And if there's the wa, the width of the, or length of the wall is greater than sixteen feet, then they must provide some architectural features. Uh, so these are, no blank or unarticulated facades are permitted unless facade is not visible by the public right of way. Um, and then some ideas for architectural features are design of windows, door openings, materials and color. And if you can remember, two zero seven two zero, two zero seven seven zero, Kelly Road, East Point. This building lacks significant windows along Kelly.
But one, I think, once we, that's why we, I think we were talking about adding the trees and then we add the trees and then it'll have the same aesthetic look with the, um, with the block. The stone look with the two-tone look along the street as well. Which is, it'll still give it a nice visual appearance for people driving by as well. Which is, it'll still give it a nice visual appearance for people driving by as well.
Spasiewski, does the two-tone pane, as Ms. Naylor stated, the um count as visual architect?
If it looked like the front, yeah, basically, if it looked like the front, would that count? As it's two, two, as a stone look and it's two colors?
Architectural rendering for the length. It's not one solid wall, it's two-tone with brown at the base.
Uh Chair, that's what's up for discussion, if the Planning Commission sees that this is sufficient use of architectural variation.
I it changes the look, it's not a white wall like what you see, it's it's, that's the architect, with the two-tone base.
It does, i- is that seventy-five feet long, is that correct?
Go to the site plan.
Sorry, I I already answered the question, I mean, it is seventy-five feet long. I mean, the whole point was we, to break up a long section, so even though you have two different tones, there's still a long, long horizontal. I I would prefer to see something to break it up. That's why the ordinance, or that's why the why we have that language in the ordinance.
Well, architect, the drawing modification, I guess my only question is whatever modification. He, just say if he took the brown right up the middle, now it's not, okay, he had the brown, it came up the base and went up the middle. And now it's not, but at the same time, I guess my biggest question is if he makes that variation that if you show him the plans, can that be added? If they don't like what he's proposed, then it could be wrong. Like the front goes up in the middle here.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes, similar pattern on the side. He has the ground going up the middle on that, on that actual photo, but he followed a similar pattern on the side. It breaks up the the wall, but if that's the case, can that be added?
I think once you look at it, I think it'll change the appearance, because it's not done and maybe it's hard to like kind of visualize it, but I think once we do the stone look on, all around it and people are driving, they're not gonna notice it's a long blank wall, simply because of how the stone and the architectural look of the stone looks. Uh and the trees are gonna be blocking seventy-five percent of it as is.
Mrs. Smith, do you have? One moment.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I apologize, um I was not here last meeting, but I just have a question for the applicant that is it not possible to add another window similar in size on that frontage, so at least on the end, there's two windows?
We didn't want to start um architecturally blowing blocks out and then having to support the window and adding the extra cross. The reason, you know, when the, when this building was originally built, it was built, I would assume it was built uh or the, I believe the plan was approved for the one window on the street, the ordinance changed after. And um you know, I know he didn't complete it, but he actually completed the building, the the structure is actually built. He didn't, he didn't finish the cosmetic of it, but the actual structure is formed, I would assume that would be grandfathered in simply because the actual structure is built.
Yeah, unfortunately, that is not grandfathered in.
I think the question was, um consultant, when we had that question brought up in the meeting.
Yeah.
Because of the nature of the retail, we were talking about windows. And um I think one of the, another uh commissioner mentioned, you know, you have to be thinking of them. They got like smash and grab.
Smash and grab, and then it also takes away from those square foot.
Chair, please, applicant, direct comments through the chair.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Naylor, sorry, as you were.
That's okay, so I think that was one, that did come up, when we talked about the additional windows on that side, because then um I think it was, let me say, you go about the back, they have to stay the same in the back, and everybody, I wonder if there's some places that Kelly is a, is a busier street.
Yeah.
And um we agreed in the last meeting, that part, um I believe we addressed. So I I guess my question is, um we gave that waiver to get the new site planning, as we required the site plan on file, because it's been revoked, and other one that was on file and expired. So naturally, I would say, um just to move the meeting. If it can be managed administratively, we wanted to, you know, accept the, if that's enough architectural variance with the basis, he's wrapping the building and the trees on the side. We did mention that was okay with the window before, on the past month. But at the same time, we want to make sure, um whether it has to come back here or just be handled administratively, that that's my biggest takeaway. If we have these three areas that you brought to our attention, that would be whether we would waive or not. The glazing, the long wall. You could just put those heights corrections in the alley, return to Kelly versus, or Eight Mile versus alley. Those, if those modifications could suffice, I'd be willing to move that we, you know, accept based on.
Well, I do remember that we talked about the blank wall, and I do remember we said that blowing out the walls and putting in windows was a hardship. I do remember that. And I do remember Chairman Lubeck saying, or Commissioner Lubeck saying that, uh just don't use the fake windows like CBS.
Right.
But I thought we also did talk about, like, uh Ms. Spasiewski, was it like lighting or metal or something?
Sconces could be a useful tool to add some depth and feature along the wall.
I would, I would be more than, that would be fine to put something on the wall, like a lighting or something, yes, that, I would, I would be uh willing to put some lighting on the side if that covers it as well, too.
That's a great, great idea.
Something, something like that.
Congratulations, Chair, what a great idea. Thank you zoning administrator Smith Wolf for providing the dialogue.
Teamwork, teamwork.
Do you see that on both the back and the Kelly side?
I I would put the li, I would put the lighting on all, probably all three sides, or at least, at least on the the equal two sides, so it looks.
And you'll still have the two-tone.
And I'll still have the two-tone, and it'll look aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, I could get behind that, that, that's a good suggestion.
Chair, if we may, um can we be particular or specific about where we requiring these sconces?
Yes.
Thank you. So, um Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Weber?
Yes, I believe the applicant said he'll do all three sides.
I'll do, I'll do all three sides.
Okay, and then?
Do we have?
Alley?
An amount?
Maybe, I'm sorry.
Um an um amount that we need to have on there, like every ten feet, every twenty feet?
Maybe it's five feet?
Oh, those are nice.
Okay, so um subject to, Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Subject to the lighting to meet the photometric plan requirements. Um placement every eight feet?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, no more than two, because you don't want to interfere with the lighting requirements, so place it out so that we manage this both. Break up the architect without all the old ones right here.
Tamara, you're saying the light should be every eight feet?
Chair?
Yes.
I think we could have some flexibility.
Okay.
Administrative approval.
Okay.
What the applicant and their architect provide. As long as it meets, um it's, it accounts for variation, it's not just one light, and it meets photometric requirements.
Perfect. Is that?
That, that, that works, I was, I was thinking maybe like three, because I don't want to like bombard it to where now you're looking, there's like too many lights on that.
Just want to make sure that, yeah. Okay, so whatever lights you pick out.
Probably, the ones that were just shown right there look pretty good, if I can get my hands on some of those, I got no issue putting. I, you know, I really want to put some tasteful stuff on the building, so I, you know, it's gonna look really nice, so maybe something like the long one.
Yeah, those are simple.
I think the long one might be probably the best one shown there, if there's something else that kind of looks like it or is just as good. But yeah, I don't think any of the short ones would do.
No.
Do justice.
Yes.
Should I send you the Amazon link?
Yes, definitely.
Good job. Okay, so we've covered the architectural part, we've covered the EIFS. And are we agreeing, uh what are we agreeing to on the landscaping? Um are we taking away the excessive tree requirement, are we waiving that? Anybody else have anything on anything? Okay? Okay? Yes.
And Chair, based on the conversations at the table tonight, Tamara, you have a recommended motion uh that they could just adopt by reference this evening.
Yes. All right. Okay, so um we have a recommended motion to approve the site plan for the retail sale establishment at two zero seven seven zero Kelly Road. Zero two one four three two three seven nine zero zero one. Um uh no, sorry, to conditionally approve the site plan. Um as long as the applicant meets the requirements and recommendations in the planner's review letter dated April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and the engineer's review letter. Uh also in April twenty twenty-four. And we grant a waiver for the, to allow for the EIFS facade material to be a primary material and not secondary material. We also waive the requirement to have an architect seal. We waive any excessive street tree requirements. Um we waive any excessive shrub requirements. And we um correct the elevations previously known as alley and represent that this is the eight-mile elevation. How'd I do?
And do we just need to add the architectural interest to the other three walls?
Uh thank you, Chair, thank you, Chair. And we also require the architectural variation in the form of sconces.
And do you have to change the the building height?
She said that.
Oh, you did that, okay.
Any, everybody good with that, anyone want to make the motion?
For the consultant's recommendation, upon the motion? Would then be added?
Yeah, just, you just indicate that you make the motion to adopt by reference, a statement by the planner.
Okay. I file a motion to adopt the statement made by the planners for the conditional approval of the site plan for the applicant.
Support?
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes?
Chair Yulinski?
Yes.
Mike Ruhl, yes, or Chairman Ruhl, Chairman, Chairman, Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
We're all cheers tonight.
Yes.
All right.
Uh Secretary Ruhl, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, uh so you'll have to go with the recommendations.
Okay.
New plan to the city planner.
So I'll, I'll have him, I'll have him adjust everything we discussed, he'll send it back over, and then once he sends it over, does that allow me the opportunity to get back to work on the building? Or where do we go from there?
Yes.
Yeah, great, so um me and my colleague are here, and we're in the office Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, so we can have a meeting with you to discuss anything that you might need to tweak out. Um but other than that, you just follow the recommendations brought to, or the requirements brought to you today, and what's listed in the planner, resubmit your site plan. Once you get final site plan approval, you can move on to the building department. I don't, I don't know if you need to submit construction drawings. Um but the building department's the next step, and they will grant a work order for you.
Okay. Okay, perfect. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Good luck, thank you.
You guys have a good night, thank you.
And thanks again for.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for saving that ice.
Okay. Mrs. Smith, are you going next?
Yes. Thank you, so is it okay if I sit here, or do you want me to go to the podium?
I'm fine with you there.
Okay. So for those of you who don't know me, because I know there's so many faces, uh my name is Brigitte Smith, and now my new last name is Wolf. Um and I am the zoning administrator and fellow planner for the City of East Point through McKenna. So I'm here this evening to discuss with you this draft plan for the Kelly Road Complete Streets Corridor Improvement Plan. And what this document is, is a report about what the city and its stakeholder partnerships through a steering committee have been working on to lay the foundation and a groundwork, basically lay a path forward to initiate further public investments in a coordinated effort across businesses to improve the corridor along Kelly Road. So this report encapsulates the work that we've been doing this past year through the SEMCOG Planning Assistant Grant that we received. The reason that we applied for this grant is that we've heard a number of times about how there is such a strong interest in seeing more investment along Kelly Road. Both private and public dollars invested along Kelly Road. Um we heard this as a main priority in the master plan, the mo, the last master planning process. And that further initiated converting Kelly Road to be mixed-use, a mixed-use corridor, allowing for a mix of commercial and residential. Um again, incentivizing and encouraging further dev- development. Um so that was a great start to initiate the vision in the master plan through the zoning ordinance, but we wanted to take that a step further. Kelly Road is unique because it has such a wide public right-of-way. It's about a hundred and eighty, and at some points, two hundred feet of public right-of-way, which is a great amount of space to be able to utilize for not only transportation, but for business purposes, social, and um even special events, looking to even make it a place that could accommodate markets, art fairs, et cetera. Um and this is not only a priority for the City of East Point, but it's also a priority for the City of Harper Woods. So continuing that corridor and even there's interest uh supported by um groups, planning efforts, and council members within the City of Detroit as well. So we took the opportunity to seek this SEMCOG Planning Assistant Grant to be able to initiate a multi-jurisdictional coordinated approach at looking at how we can have coordinated investment and improvements along Kelly Road. So then, really the main we, we talked about a number of um strategies on how we could do this. And again, because Kelly Road is such a wide public right-of-way, but also because it's an important transportation corridor to access schools, existing businesses and um homes as well, we knew that looking at the streetscape design would be a really important part of this plan. And so that's why most of the report does actually focus on the streetscape. Because that's also where a great deal of the public investment will be. We also discussed strategies on how to incentivize and coordinate private investment. Um so the City of Harper Woods just initiated their zoning ordinance rewrite process. We, and we talk about, mentioned that in the plan that they're also exploring mixed-use, so they'll be looking to the City of East Point in what not only allowing for mixed-use, but looking at what types of uses are permitted along Kelly to help keep it cohesive and feel like more of a joint commercial corridor, especially with Eastland Mall closing. We really want to hone in on supporting this as a thriving business district, a thriving social district. So um yeah, we all, we talked about potentially assembling a corridor improvement district or even a business improvement district, the difference is that a business improvement district can be a tax or a fee-based entity in which it uh collects funds from the businesses to coordinate further investments in addition to the city's general fund for added enhancements to the Kelly corridor. Uh so that's an option that we explored, and I think the first step with that would be the cities working together to uh reach out to businesses and for, and formulate a a corridor improvement committee. Uh another thing we talked about is a facade improvement program, again, across cities to help uh drive further private investment. And then um there will be some other strategies that would be worked out with the corridor improvement committee to even drive in new development. Again, implementing the mixed-use idea. And really, all of this. And really, all of this is to have, again, a coordinated effort to actualize the vision that has been for Kelly Road for so long, to have it be, again, a more vibrant social space, public space. So with that, again, this report discussed, and the steering committee discussed in great deal, what a streetscape redesign could potentially look like for Kelly Road. And the scope of our funding was limited, so the scope of our, this round of the project was limited, but we did decide that this is a great opportunity to look at creating a complete street, which means that there's a pathway for all modes of transportation, especially because this is an important school corridor, and we have the public right of way space to do it. We also talked about how we should take on the approach of what's called Vision Zero, which is incorporating design elements to prevent traffic-related accidents, or traffic-related collisions and injuries. So even like pedestrian to bicycle, or pedestrian to vehicle, vehicle to vehicle, those sorts of accidents that can occur in transportation corridors. So, within this plan, really the key takeaways are the vision that's set, the goals that are set, and it offers some preliminary concept ideas for the redesign, in which we had an open house to discuss those concepts, but there is further work that needs to be done before we even begin to finalize what the redesign would look like. This was just to initiate ideas, see what the interest was, and show what is even possible. But really consistently throughout East Point and the city, that's actually a great visual that Mara pulled up. This was from the open house, there was a DIY activity where you could assemble the streetscape yourself, and we had the different components of what could be included in complete street. And this person showed widening the median to add a linear park, reconfiguring, this is for south of Eight Mile, but reconfiguring the slanted parking to be parallel parking to maximize the amount of space for other uses, widen sidewalk, outdoor cafes, better bus shelters. So this was something that we actually heard a great, a deal of interest in, is looking at really activating the median, the center median, adding either like a strolling walking path, or adding even the bicycle lane even in the median. But there's a great deal of additional research that would need to go in to finalizing that design concept. We would have to look at closing median turnaround points, which isn't as pertinent for the East Point portion, that's more so for the portion south of Eight Mile, because they, at some points, they have a vehicle turnaround every three hundred feet through the median, which there's a number of reasons to look at closing some of those, some being that it allows for faster speeds cutting through Kelly and into the residential side streets, but also it. Only keeping the necessary vehicle turning points also helps reduce crashes as well. We see a great deal of rear end, but also angle collisions along Kelly Road, so that would be something that we would need to explore further, is really our intersections. These concepts here only show the streetscape layout. We didn't, again, in the next phase, we would look at really what the intersections would look like, and where we would specifically need to close down center median turning points. Yeah, so that is really what this plan proposes. So, part of this report is going to be used to submit for our next round of funding, which is known as the Safe Streets For All funding. It's a federal opportunity that really is a, the last round of funding is twenty twenty six, so we were happy to be able to assemble this steering committee and really put a good foot forward to get this competitive funding opportunity that would allow us to do the complete engineering studies necessary to have a new streetscape design. And the elements that we took away from this round of studying were that we need wider sidewalks, and to support outdoor dining and even more public special events, we would look to have at least ten-foot wide sidewalks. In some areas, we can have even wider. Looking to have protected and buffered bike lanes, so buffering the bike lanes between the different modes of transportation. Looking to add pedestrian and cyclist amenities, which means adding seating, pedestrian scale lighting, bike racks, even looking to invite like a shared bicycle system once we have the proper bike lanes. Really enhancing our end and mid-block crosswalks, adding amenities for transit riders, so bus pullout, but also paved paths to every bus waiting area, bus shelters, et cetera. Those efforts have already started along Kelly Road, but they have not been consistently implemented throughout the corridor, so we would work with Smart and DOD to coordinate that, and even encourage them adding further investment in public transit along the corridor. And then, yeah, things like outdoor dining and allowing for some business activity to occur within the public right of way and sidewalk. So that, those were our core takeaways, but I am here this evening to hear from you if, hear your comments or feedbacks on this plan, and then, like I said, the next step would be, this is just the groundwork, the framework that's set for these, this next planning round that would take over at least the next year before we would have a redesign submitted. But also in this next wave of planning, we're seeking funding to have more public engagement, public, yeah, I mean, a lot of public engagement, but even having design working sessions with the public, and public informational sessions, et cetera.
Does anyone have questions?
I have a comment. Your last statement of really making sure we have funding for the community engagement, I didn't think it was a very good turnout for the first meeting we had at the Trinity Church, whatever it was. So I don't think we got a lot of feedback in those meetings, because there was just not a lot of people there present, and I don't know if we can gauge the whole corridor for that turnout. I think Kelly is unique in that when we first was doing our master plan, I was assigned Kelly to drive from Eight Mile to Ten Mile. We have such a variance of businesses. I think what can make Kelly feel a lot more vibrant, long before we touch the streets is, as you mentioned, the facade. Is there a possibility, I know you said charging the business owners, and we don't know what, how these businesses are performing, because there are some vacancies starting to emerge, are they struggling? But I think the facades of the buildings for these business areas are like really, really dated. And I know in Detroit, when they really started trying to make vibrant communities, they went to, they offered a lot of facade to business owners, they could like maybe get a fifty percent reimbursement, or if they got more people down the block to participate, they had a greater percentage. I think if we really started with looking at the way these businesses look, like the trophy placement there, I don't think, a part of it hasn't had any upgrades, and, and I've used them since my nieces and nephews are in the PayPal, they're in their mid-thirties, but that's a long time with no real facade improvements, and I think that would really make people be drawn to Kelly. I think a lot of times we go to, and I know complete streets are important, it's kind of trendy and multimodal and all of that, but where we go ride our bikes too. These buildings, businesses still look like, I wouldn't feel like I'm in a good vibrant place, but I looked at these, these buildings, they have houses and schools, and then there's a whole residential strip, and then you get back to businesses, and they're old and dated. I think the most thing we've seen is the dedicated senior building is the most improvement we've seen, they run a whole block, but it's not very colorful, it's just kind of long and gray. Those are my comments, I think Kelly offers a great opportunity to connect three communities, Detroit, Harper Woods, and Detroit, and I think it would be absolutely awesome to give us a place-making space since we don't have Eastland Mall in this region, but I think working with the size of the businesses, buildings could really go a long ways to make people be more engaged. That's my thoughts.
Agree. They are dated, I don't know what we can do about that, but yeah, even the parking lots are pretty torn up. I, I think if we could do it, it's fabulous, it would be wonderful. I mean, I like it a lot, and I know they closed when they redid Grashit in Roseville, they changed those turnarounds and made them longer. I don't think that would be an issue, if it would slow people down, which I doubt it will, because red lights and stop signs are optional. I, I think I probably get almost hit three days a week going to work down Eight Mile for optional stoppage. But one of the things I do like that they did on Maras, in that median by the hospital, and this is by no way would just be aesthetic, I'd love to know who does those sculptures, and if they get funding, if they get funding to do those. New ones keep popping up, and I'm like, oh, look at that one, oh, look at that one.
Like every spring, there's some new ones, that is cool.
It's very cool, and their landscaping is gorgeous.
The people around them, yes. That would give us a lot of people to saw in Kelly, that artwork.
It really is. But other than that, I'm all for moving forward and keep going, and I know there was more than just that one meeting.
Oh, there was?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that was the only one I knew of.
Yeah, we had...
Sorry.
Well, no, that's okay, that was our big, main, public, in-person event, and then we had the survey online, but the majority of the work was done through the steering committee meetings. But yeah, the open house was our one big, main, public event, again, for the scope of this.
Thanks for the question.
But yeah, the next round to our intended approach to public engagement would be, we've kind of talked about the corridor at large, but now we have our guiding principles, so we would hope to have more of section, like meetings focused on the sections, and help with working out the finer details of the design segments along Kelly Road. We'll talk about the corridor in general, but yeah, that would be our next step or the vision for our next round of public engagement.
Do we currently have any eateries on Kelly, restaurants?
No.
I mean, we talked about outside eating, like...
Yeah, just...
Who's serving the food?
I don't know, can you guys get Atkins Pie to come to East Point? They need an east side location.
Can we entice to come, right?
The other thing for aesthetic, Kelly Road is getting brighter and brighter all the time. I saw that, Mara. I'm talking about all the rope lighting.
Oh, the rope lighting, that rope lighting's been there for a long, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's gotta go.
I was just thinking like this, because there's so much, I think it's kind of dark, there's not enough street lighting in those, where you get that whole...
And that's true.
... residential, I'm like, I always live over here, you try to come out, somebody goes flip you.
Yeah.
I mean, he's just, there's not enough light where those intersections are.
You have heard that before, you're right. Anybody else, questions, comments?
Chair.
Yes, please.
Thank you for your work, zoning administrator Smith Wolf, appreciate you, this is a great project, I'm so excited, right? I am, I just want to clarify the next step, so it's to apply for the Safe Streets For All Grant, is that the planning grant?
Yeah.
Okay. So Chair, there's also an implementation grant, so once we submit successfully create a Safe Streets For All plan, or Kelly Road Complete Streets Plan, and zoning administrator Smith, please correct me if I'm wrong, we can then apply for implementation grants from the Safe Streets For All program, and that will help with the actual installation of lighting, facade improvements, streetscape design, all, all of that.
How do we make...
So it's the planning process.
Yeah.
To get to that implementation.
Right, step by step.
Exactly.
For sure. One foot in front of the other. So what would be, how do, if we do that on Kelly, how do we make like the intersections of Eight and Kelly and Nine and Kelly safer? Like, that's huge.
That is huge, and that's gonna be, again, a main focus of the next planning phase. We talked more big picture ideas, but it really is gonna also depend on the final streetscape design north and south of the intersection, on the approach that we take. But yes, we have at least initiated conversations with MDOT about what we can do, and I...
No islands.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, again, it'll depend how we need to like have traffic flow, but I think some changes that are simple that would make all the difference is looking at the lane configurations that lead up to the intersections, and protecting pedestrians with right-hand turns, looking at the curb configurations, and even again, the buffering, using better buffering and visuals, and repainting the crosswalks. We even talked about, talking about public art, we also have discussed a coordinated effort to have public walks as the crosswalk, and really giving more emphasis to the pedestrian pathways through the intersections. So that would be for the main intersections like Eight, Nine Mile. But yeah, the, it'll, it will, yeah. We're gonna work as best as we can with MDOT to address the Eight Mile intersection, because that's gonna be key, but yeah, some things that we will do is honing and utilizing public art as a mechanism to not only provide better visuals, but also make it a little bit more of a welcoming, friendly intersection to cross.
Okay.
I think that other art is gonna really spawn participation, because it grabs you. But whenever they do some roads, I live on Stricker, the first street aside is Eight Mile, so if I come down my street, try and get on Kelly, I might as well just back up and try and go down another street. And then as soon as I get through the median, here comes that Eight Mile traffic, I'm like, that's the most dangerous place, I try and do it as minimal, but that first street, Stricker, coming out onto Kelly, I mean, you gotta dodge, the people coming to Kelly, and I mean, to Eight Mile, and they're not slowing down, like, are they gonna stop, are they gonna stop or not, you know, you just don't know. And then if you do get to the median, they're whipping around Eight Mile on the Kelly, and it's just a real, so put that one at the top, this one, I mean, just kidding, I'm just kidding. This street I try and get on the Kelly Road, it's like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, we did talk about the Nine Mile intersection a little bit, the challenge is is gonna be that this would take place after the Nine Mile repavement project, so again, the changes would likely occur with the crosswalks, and maybe even, yeah, lighting, we could potentially look at the curbs and using bump outs, but yeah, that intersection will be a little bit trickier to...
For sure.
...reimagine.
Yeah.
At least they're working on the streets, I mean, yeah.
Okay, anybody else have anything on that? No, Mara, do we need to do a recommend approval for the streetscape?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the Kelly Road Corridor Complete Street Plans? City Council. Anyone going once? Hey, I'll make the motion to consider recommending, or to recommend approval of the Kelly Road Corridor Complete Street Plans to City Council. Wow, tough crowd.
I'll support.
Thank you. Oh, it's late. Everybody's starting to wind down.
Chair Ulitski.
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes.
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor.
No.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Broll, yes.
Okay, unfinished business. We have none. Motion to open the second hearing of the public. I don't need to.
That's not necessary.
Yeah, that's the other one. Sorry. Thank you. All right, second hearing of the public. Do we have anyone to speak?
I've not done this before, so I don't know what point I should have been speaking at. My name's Jennifer Nicholas and I am a East Point resident. I do live very close to Kelly Road. My concern with some of the configurations proposed for the corridor has to do with the residents that live on Kelly Road, specifically between Nine and Ten Mile Road. That's pretty much 100% residential. Right now, we have two lanes of one-way traffic on each side of the median, which allows, I feel, safety for people backing out of their driveways. Or also there are multi, multi-unit condos there. A lot of the Babcock properties all up and down both sides of Kelly Road, which they have to enter and exit onto Kelly Road. They have no other way. One of the designs that they have in the presentation would eliminate the median, basically turning the west side of Kelly Road into a linear park. And then the east side of Kelly Road would be one lane each of two-way traffic with a left turn lane, which would force people to back out into two-way traffic instead of one-way traffic. And also with the people that live in the co-ops, a lot of them are retired. You know, sometimes you see them driving a little bit slower and more cautiously, which is reasonable. You know, there's traffic accident statistics also in this presentation. For the East Point part from Ash to Ten Mile Road, there, over a five-year period, I believe there were 99 traffic accidents, which comes out to less than two accidents per month. No fatalities. 75% of those accidents are non-injury accidents. I feel that Kelly Road at that portion is very, very safe for residential. And restructuring it would make it less safe. I mean, I don't know how much safer we can be than less than two accidents per month. My concern also is that the people that live on Kelly Road are not aware of this. You know, the survey that was given to people to go online, which I think 120, 130 people filled out, doesn't talk about road design. It talks about, you know, do you want lighting? Do you want outdoor dining? Do you want park benches? It doesn't talk about removing medians or cutting down lanes of traffic or turning one-way traffic into two-way traffic. I feel that's very misleading to people. You know, there's not a lot of information about this project available to the public. There's nothing on the city of East Point website short of just a little flyer that was talking about the, the meeting at the church on March 21st. I, I feel that people are going to be very surprised as this moves forward if you start reconfiguring the road without lots of input. You know, my concern is that this project is going to just keep moving along and be approved, approved, approved. And then you're going to wind up with a Nine Mile Road situation where people are screaming, what do you mean? You're, you're removing the median and rerouting traffic. I, I just, you know, really want the planning commission and city council to really look at this carefully and take into account the residents that live there and make sure that you are reaching out to them in some, some manner to, to let them know that this is coming. I, I just, you know, that's, that's my, my major concerns about, about this project. I feel it's great revitalizing Kelly Road. I agree with you 100% to redo the facades and fix the potholes in the parking lots. And yes, there should be more businesses and restaurants and, you know, pop-up, you know, events and, and things like that. I think there is a lot of potential on Kelly Road, but that would be more between Nine and Eight Mile. And even with that, you have to consider all the residents on the east side of Kelly between Nine Mile and Eight Mile. Again, there are a lot of multi-unit, you know, co-ops there with, with hundreds of people that live there that, you know, you have to take into account that they're going to be looking across the street at whatever events are going on. The center median is the most beautiful part of Kelly Road. It's beautiful. Tree-lined. It's hard to see in the presentation because I think the pictures were probably taken in the winter time. But if you drive down Kelly Road now with all the trees and that, it's, it's gorgeous. So, you know, that's again, my opinion. And I've lived off of Kelly Road for 58 years. So, you know, I've, I'm very familiar. And, you know, for myself personally, I can drive another way if it's too inconvenient. If, if the road gets rearranged, I can figure out another way. But I'm concerned about the hundreds of people, a lot of them seniors, a lot of them, that they're living there for the rest of their time here. That their traffic flow is going to be disrupted and that it's going to be much more dangerous for them just trying to enter and exit. So if we can, you know, take into consideration the residents first and foremost. That's, that's just my thoughts, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure that's more than three minutes' time, right?
I, I don't say I wasn't timing anyone. Go ahead. Free speech.
All right. Well, it was nice to meet all of you and see all of you in person to see how this works. You, you do a phenomenal job, just the detail that you have to go through with every single project that comes up. I commend you. I wouldn't want to do it. And you know, your, your design work is, is beautiful. And again, I know you put a lot of effort into it, but I feel that you have to look at the human aspect, the residents. You know, you're very good at designing and, and how streets can look and bike paths. But, you know, you have to let residents know what's happening. And if you're going to, you know, if they have 100 feet in front of their house and now you're going to have a bike path coming through that area or a bus lane cutting into that area, you gotta let them know in advance, you know, to, to give them a heads up to avoid what has happened before because that's very unproductive.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
What I learned today from my colleague, who was project manager of this project, is that no decisions haven't been made yet. We're just in the final, or sorry. Preliminary thought process of if we want to do something on Kelly Road, what is it? The second phase is to get that rich community engagement and the wealth of knowledge of people like you that live there for 48, 58 years and the seniors and to really just like have more grant funding to support more community outreach. Right now, we're constrained within the amount of grant funding that we have now. We only can do so much. So we're just hitting the surface. But the next phase is understanding what people want to see. Nothing's final. The next phase is a focus on hearing the community voice and we, I expect to see you there.
Yeah, no, and, and if I can address you. You know, part of it too was those boards that you had up at City Hall, you know, in the lobby here for quite some time. It, you know, you presented one option for each area. And to me, that doesn't seem like it's giving people a choice. If you're saying, this is what we're designing from, you know, Nine Mile to Ten Mile, tell us what you like or don't like. In my mind, I feel that that's pretty much the way that it's going to be. And you might ask residents, you know, how many park benches they want or what kind of trees. But that's, you know, the, the designs that I was seeing. And people don't know about this. You know, I came here twice to look at the boards. The first time I ran into somebody that was paying their water bill and he says, well, what's all this about? You know, and I've said, you know, this is Kelly Road. And he said, oh, you know, I thought they were doing Nine Mile. The day before, the last day you had the thing here, I, I was in here again to pay my water bill and ran into a woman that was getting a dog license. And she said, oh, what are they doing, you know, Nine Mile again? And I said, no, this is Kelly Road. And she's like, I haven't heard anything about this. I, I just, it's just not, you know, and I'm not a Facebook person. I don't know what the right method is to communicate to people that this is coming. But, you know, it really needs to be explained that this isn't just setting up a social district. This, this, in order to set up a social district, you are saying that we're going to have to redesign Kelly Road. And, you know, that's not being discussed anywhere. And I, I just, you know, again, I feel that you're going to run into a lot of backlash from people. And, you know, the people that are going to suffer the most are the ones that have the smallest voice, which I feel would be, you know, 75% of those residents that live in the Babcock facilities. So just again, to keep, keep that in mind. I mean, you know.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Sorry.
No, appreciate your words.
Everybody drive home safe.
I'm grabbing a cookie on the way out. Don't worry. All right, I think that's it. We are at commissioner's comments. We start with Mara.
Um, well, I'd like to thank my colleague here for all of her excellent work so far on just the surface level of consideration for a complete street program within East Point. Complete streets do reconsider a street and not just from the lens of automobile-centric use, but also allow for flexibility for all users. So increase the walkability for those seniors, increase the walkability for families, dog walkers, people that go to the bus and use the bus and have dedicated bus lane, cyclists. So it's just really a vision of using the street for all or allowing the street to be used for all users and not just that monoculture of a vehicle. So I'd like to thank her, all of her, her work, preliminary work. And we'll see what the conversation goes next. We'll have a lot of more conversations ahead of us. So thank you for bringing that into the room. And I also like to thank my colleague, the Community Economic Development Manager McCain for organizing this state historic office of preservation training for us. Thank you, Ian. That was so great. I didn't know anything about this process, so now I'm able to inform more communities and we can make an educated decision if we want to pursue this. And then also Ian would say that if any commissioners are interested in attending the, what is it? Michigan State University Extension Program. It's a citizen planner program. The city of East Point will fund your, your program training. And there's some availability out there for the next round. So if you want to give a little, have a little bit more training in how to read a site plan, what a special yield due says, what's a variance, those sort of things. I took the training right after I graduated and I, I, I loved it. I still have my colleagues that I met on the program. I have a cohort with them. So it was very educational. I recommend the program. And if you would like to attend, feel free to reach out to me or Ian or Community Economic Development Manager McCain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me here this evening and giving consideration to this Kelly Road draft plan. Mara always says things so eloquently and speaks so well, but she made a great point that this is really, again, it's a framework to initiate the conversation. We know it takes time for everyone to understand what's happening, but these plans do take time. This is a multi-year process. I also understand that there's extra sensitivity with streetscapes following the Nine Mile planning process, but we are taking a different approach. So we do want input. And Jennifer, I appreciate you for coming out this evening. I know you've also emailed and provided input other routes as well. So again, we want people to know about what's happening. We want the word to spread. And we want there to be a great deal of engagement on this plan. And that's why we are seeking this federal grant as well as Safe Streets For All Planning and Demonstration Grant, which would further support those efforts. So yeah, we just need to get the funding to do it and then we will spend the next couple of years on working out the details.
Thank you. Mr. Albright?
Congratulations, Manager. I'm conducting a well-run meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Well done.
Commissioner Stokes?
It's good to see all of you and thanks for all the hard work and the planning for these meetings.
Thank you to both of you for guiding us through these meetings. It's always an honor to have you guys support us and, and give us the support we need as a community. I am of the mindset when I think about Kelly Road, I just have to say that people first. I, I'm just always kind of pushing back when I see we go to the streets first. And I think businesses are the vibrant part of our community. I know we need the multimodal experience because the world is changing. But I think we need to really focus on our businesses and get them to support their need to put traffic that, that can help. So I just don't want us to preliminary, go too quickly with the preliminary work without really getting enough voices. I met some other local advisory committees and it just kind of slows us down because you get five, six months in and then the people really get irate and they come and set you back five or six months. So I would just say really incorporate as many voices of the community. And I wasn't aware of the amount of meetings that were being held, so I'm glad to hear that. Secondly, yes, Stricker and Kelly is an interesting intersection. And I would love to see that improvement with the streetscape redesign. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
Good evening to everyone. I missed the last meeting. I was out of town, but I'm back. And it's good to see everyone. Again, thank you guys for all of the work you put in. And everyone have an amazing rest of your evening.
Commissioner Broll?
I can't tell you. Yeah, thanks from the County team for both of your initiatives and what you guys do. And good job today, Commissioner. Chairman.
Councilwoman Pasowski, nothing?
As always, I do thank and appreciate you both. You guys are, are great. I, I love the ideas. I, I love the generational thinking. I learned something. It doesn't matter from what age of a person. They always give ideas. Collaboration from all age groups is amazing to me. I think that's how we keep moving forward because we're still a generational community. So, you know, we all need to. And yeah, so if we can think about, now think about too, how to get the word out more to people and get them involved. You know, I don't know if that's door to door. Yes, I would volunteer. You know, something to, I don't know, we'll have to come up with some ideas to, to make sure people are aware of all that's going on because there are a lot of great ideas. I appreciate you all for tolerating me tonight. And that's it. Our next meeting is for June 6th. And it is 9:43 and meeting's adjourned. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I support.
Commissioner?